On the twelve five o'clock. Committee, the whole meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Capigrosa?
Here.
Commissioner Livermore?
Here.
Commissioner Middleton?
Here.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Seabird?
Yes. I think we started with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in his beautiful, with liberty and justice for all.
Free public comment. Second, free public. Third, no public comment today. Agenda. Any changes anybody's got?
Nope.
Consensus?
Yep.
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 Minutes, did anybody have a chance to look at the minutes, find any years?
I did, I found one. An AMP error, I already gave it to the whole effect, so. Must be a really important meeting over here two thirty one nine.
Seniors on approving the minutes?
Yep.
Yep.
Seven, Elder County Commissioner Agent requests. For home deliveries and meal application.
Okay, I hear this request with Commissioner Agent. For years now, we've been trying to get the hospital to start cooking the home delivered meals again, because they did years and years ago. And finally, they accepted. Well, pretty much they accepted, it's kind of in the works yet, but um. Anyway, it'd be wonderful to get it back in Elder County again, instead of shipping the meals from Marquette. So it'll be better quality. You know, and and just continuity, everything will be better. Right now is we're we're contracted with Upcap for many of our services, and it's our annual proposal time again. So we thought, well, let's just try out for the home delivered congregate meal funding too. So we just sent it in this morning, so we'll hear probably hopefully by the end of this week if we are granted the money for home delivered meal and congregate. So the home delivered meal pocket of money available sixty one thousand nine hundred fifty six for Elder. And congregate is thirty six thousand five hundred eighteen. So it's not a ton of money, but we did some quick figuring and. We think we can make it work. If we start out and deliver Monday, Wednesday, Friday, a hot meal. And at the same time, the delivery person will deliver a frozen for Tuesday, Thursday, and the weekend if they need it. And then if things go smooth, we can bump it up to five days a week. Because of some, you know, it's a perfect program to check on people, number one. So daily would be really good. The trouble is trying to find a worker, we need a driver, and the hospital needs a cook. So those are going to be the hard things to cover, because we're all so busy.
Do they have help with the driver, or I mean for delivery?
Um, Altran?
Yeah.
I called and sent it, well, I emailed Paige. And she sent a message back and said, because they used to do that way back in the day, but she said it would be way too expensive for us to contract with them. Because it'd be like a six, seven hour day for them to to deliver in Munising and Chadman-Trenery. So she said there it would just eat your money out real quick.
Yeah, I don't think it used to be. I don't think it was like one person doing the delivery, I think they spread it all over all their drivers, how they used to do it.
Yeah, yeah. But the hospital um is going out for six fifty a meal. So at first we thought, oh, it's kind of high, and it does take up pretty much, you know, the huge chunk of funding, but that's what they're they're there for, that's the food. But um as we look at it, it's going to include the containers, the cellophane, the wrap that goes over the container. A nutritionist once a week. And their cook. And they're going to pay the cook eighteen dollars an hour. So. Hopefully it all works out, their full-time cook retires in the first of December, I think Christie said. So um. But this funding starts October first, so we need to. Get it going. So if we're awarded the money. We have to move fast, so. Um, Upcap says start, um, get the word out that, you know. Get that, get this word out for the delivery person.
Twenty-four hour a week job, three days.
What's that?
How many hours per week for the driver, you think?
We're thinking probably five hours on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Because they would have to do a munising area in the Chadman-Trenery. And we're going to ask. Upcap suggested we ask for volunteer driver, but. That's probably not going to work. So we've got a backup plan, you know, included in the funding, and whatever the funding when that runs out, we have our millage to kick in to help us, so. We really want this to work, because it'd be nice.
How many meals do you anticipate?
What was that, eleven thousand seven hundred a year? So around fifty, fifty-five a day.
I think I just took all those, I think I took all that paperwork from Upcap, but last year's breakdown, what they.
And then the congregate, um Christie said they could allow in their cafeteria, they could only have like fifteen capacity for congregate. That's for people going there to sit down and eat. So we thought she's, or she suggested we just try like on a Tuesday. Every Tuesday, start with congregate and see how it goes. Um, people can also do a takeout, you know, at that time, if they wanted. That'd be nice, and the program is designed. Well, the law is you have to be sixty and older and homebound, you cannot drive. So if you do takeout. Um, you can be any age. So probably the cost would be like around eight dollars, the full cost of a meal. The suggested donation cost right now for home delivered is three fifty a meal. So once a month. Clients will get a a a letter, a donation letter, so we also have whatever donations come in, you know, we have that to to use too, so. And it's nice with the hospital, because they have they'll offer ground food, let's see, low sodium, low fat, diabetic, and heart. Heart, heart healthy diet, so that's nice, we've never had that before. And somebody asked about gluten free, and Christie said, oh, that'd be pretty expensive, but maybe. Maybe down the line, you know, I don't know. There's lots of people that are gluten sensitive, so.
Does that, don't they? Meals on Wheels or something?
Yeah, they're the ones who've been doing it forever, yeah, we're contracted with them to do all the paperwork. Through community action.
So we will get. You'll be able to get that money though, from them, that they spend right now?
Well, if we get the the Elder County allotment.
Yeah.
We will be on our own, and then they would go for the Marquette funding, like they are.
But would that funding be enough, you think, alone?
The sixty one thousand? We're hoping so, like I said, though, if it if it runs out. We have the millage as a backup.
Donation.
And donations, yeah. But we're not doing this to step on community actions toes or anything, we've gone on and do this for years.
I'd rather see it bring the bad.
They used to do it forever.
Yeah, yeah, so now it's cooked in Marquette and bussed over here, you know, and it's. It's not the perfect situation. And I think frankly, community action will be happy to be without it, you know what I mean, now we don't have to worry about Elder, you know, so. I think it's going to work, we're. We're going to give it our best shot, so. Any other questions?
Is there anything you need from us?
Yeah, if you need anything from us.
The support letter.
Okay.
Okay.
That I had turned in the other day. Um, that's what Upcap wants, that, a support letter, so.
Need that to.
Whenever you can get it, it's it's perfect, so, and then I can run over and grab it.
So I just got the request for.
The, yeah, that's the support letter, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So when you get it, I can run over and grab it, and then I'll fax it to Upcap. So along with our in-home funding, we'll probably have home delivered meals too, so it's going to be wild and busy, but we're ready.
Any requests, guys?
Nope.
You mind if we take a vote on this one?
I'd rather it get it done, so you can get the paperwork turned in.
The roll call?
Um, moved to assign the letter of support for Meals on Wheels to come back into Elder County, be cooked here and delivered here.
Okay. Well done. Commissioner Capigrosa?
Yes.
Commissioner Livermore?
Yes.
Commissioner Middleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Rondo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Seabird?
Yes.
The one question, though, you never mentioned Graham Murray.
Oh, yeah, I was going to tell you that too. Good question, um, every Wednesday, our aide goes over there to care for some folks, like four clients. So she can take five days worth of meals with her on Wednesdays. So that's the plan. Um, you know, if we get going good, maybe we can do twenty.
Rick here every second and third Monday.
And there's another gentleman, Graham Murray, that's here.
Yes.
Daniel Daley.
Yes.
Oh.
And he picks up meds.
And I'm sure he would be more than willing to take meals back as well.
Is he the fellow that goes to Puffins to pick up meds?
Yeah.
Oh, I think they have his name somewhere.
Lou. Almost every day.
Lou, Lou.
Yeah, I think he's here almost every day.
He would probably.
Pick most of them.
Good.
In all, yeah. Thank you. Don't yell at him, just pick him up.
Yeah.
Lou Bailey?
Lou Bailey.
Oh, Bailey.
Yeah.
I was going to say painting.
Of all trades.
Okay, perfect, I'll contact him, okay.
Just, you know, that's a. If you're a gang or something like that.
He has an eighty, so he won't fall back, no, he's too dumb.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, okay, tomorrow I'll contact Lou. Okay. All right. Thank you much, have a good day.
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Number eight, material management planning committee representative appointees, you have to do. A mandatory. An elected official committee. The only one that we're, did we get anything from paper bill? Nothing yet.
I'll keep trying, but no, no rush.
Okay.
So I'm the. Elected official? Is that what we decided on?
Sure.
You can be.
Oh, I thought not.
Beautiful.
You're quiet enough, long enough.
Yeah.
Dang it. I'm like, I heard somebody say, well, you're on the cue pad, you might as well stick on it. Okay. If that makes it easier.
We all agree.
I will be.
Consensus?
For Kelly to be our.
Mandatory representative.
Probably would be me, it wasn't you.
No, it would be our official.
Elected official.
Mandatory to Christian Berry.
Yep.
And then the third, it needs to be somebody in business.
They were trying to get the.
Paper.
Their big deal, material management person, so.
And she'll let you get down.
Ready for that consensus? For Kelly?
You you asked, but I don't know if we all, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm all voted, no, I'm kidding.
You already go on a tear.
That's good, that's.
We still got, we still got a meeting.
I was just asking, was I the person you were appointing?
Yeah, that's done with that one. Chris Berry, we do have to hold on her to, or consensus on her, that's Chris and Kelly?
Yeah, let's put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah. Number nine, public defender liability insurance annual renewal. Now that just gets paid for by the state. Correct? Anybody see?
Yeah.
Questions on that? Census? Number ten, public defender, part-time legal secretary, non-union position. Contingent on grant funding, this one would be. The grants gone, they're gone, they do not, not a union?
Third grant work.
Mm-hmm.
Sounds like a good.
So if a person wants to join the union, are you keeping them doing that? I don't think there's a union for them, is there? Or could they go on state level, I might concede, court staff, I don't know, she said.
Yeah, court staff, I would think.
Well, it's only part-time.
Well, it's bad, and they they can specify that in that job description, even if they are, it's going to, they can put non-union on there for hiring.
Yeah, I think that's what we have, we should do, put it on there as well.
I was going to say, it does say, part-time legal secretary, non-union position.
Right.
So it's in the job description.
You're not well employed. Any questions on that?
That was my question.
Oh. That's.
I just, she was looking. If a person. Wants to join a a union, you can't hardly stop them, can you, if they want to?
You'd have to have the proper union available for them to join, I guess, would be.
That's what I think.
But part-time, we. You don't have to offer a union a part-timer, do you?
Don't have to.
I know, sir.
It's in our contract, so it's everybody's contract is different, so, yes, I would say that, that being that she specified.
The priest over on that point, I've read all three of them now, so.
Yeah, and she specified, and then maybe. Certain job description states.
How many hours were they looking at, I wonder?
I thought she said twenty?
Twenty to thirty, I don't see. Approximately twenty per week.
Yeah, was her estimate when she came down, was talking to us.
Myself, I'd rather see this, because what that does is gives her more time. So bring more money into Elder County than.
Yeah, approximately, for the hours per week.
Gives them somebody, leaves them somebody there in the office, like when they're in court.
And it's all paid for by M and D C.
Even the prosecutor side.
I think the description is farther down.
He supported it, so.
Oh, yeah, because he's going to come back.
He said that, yes, but. Try and hide the fact that, he may try and use it as leverage later on, but, so good luck.
Any other questions on that? Consensus? Bye.
Yeah.
I'd like to know about whether they can join a union for a week.
We'll have that mentioned by hand, Steve.
Well, even if they do, and you say it's contingent on grant funding, and and I really don't think they they can, if you post it as that little position, I can check with. Our. Union has to accept you, but it's, yes, it's a right-to-work state, but it's also a union.
So they. Like our, our custodian. That's a non-union position.
Right.
Also like Brian Hill, I'll check on it.
Yeah, I'd like to have you check on that, yeah. It does say down there thirty hours of overtime available.
Um, for you, yeah, she put that in the budget, but but. I'll put it back.
That's in her budget.
Yeah.
Time issue, because if the funding goes away, so all of that state grant, the big thing.
I'll put it back on as an agenda next week.
Appreciate that.
Let me look at Michigan Association of Counties dues. Four thousand nine hundred fifty-nine forty-five cents.
Pay.
Consensus?
Consensus.
Consensus.
For twelve, a state tax commission petition to opt out for county designated assessor. We went to the counties, or the, not counties. Went through all the um. Health ships, and they all agreed to opt out.
Did not hear back from Grant Island or. Uh, the notice, the notice said they did. Have a meeting and they are opting out. Regardless, we have a majority opt out, so.
Right.
And we already have a majority.
Consensus?
Yep.
Yeah.
Or thirteen, Matthias, first responder fire hall request in an amount of sixty-eight hundred twenty dollars. That's from the sheriff, right?
Yeah, Tina Tina came in to explain that.
Right now, Matthias, last year we gave, we did help fund uh Rock River to build a brand-new garage to house the ambulance, because they've been in with fire department. Same thing with Matthias, Matthias has been in there, Matthias EMS has been in their fire. Hall, what they did is they think they got new trucks or new trucks, so it kind of kicked the ambulance out, there's a side. Garage off at the fire department, it's pretty small, but the rig fits in there, but it had not really been used. Um, it needed a new door, it needs a new garage door, it needs a skirt, is that what you call it, the cement in the front, and it needs a heater in there, our rig should be heated uh in the wintertime. So um they just requested that we could help fund that a little bit to get this work done. That's all. We're asking for, because the rig, it is still under Elder County ambulance sheriff's department, we do help fund them. We don't give them a lot every year, I mean, so.
I was by their Saturday, and that's already done. They got an apron out front, new garage door on the side.
And maybe they had it done, and they're just asking for that.
Just saying.
She had sent us this, and it didn't get brought up back in May.
Oh.
And. You know, maybe it's just funds to put back in for them, they don't have a big budget, I think they get seven thousand dollars a year from us. To run.
That's only in our budget?
Yeah.
It is in the budget, it would be under capital improvement.
Or say, or say, sure.
Any other questions?
No.
Consensus?
Census.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, fourteen, discussed bidding on metal detectors.
Joel, we have to tell you about that, yeah.
I I knew it was in there, because I read what we were supposed to talk about on Tuesday, but metal detectors were in the courthouse?
And sheriff's permit.
It came from the front door, sheriff's permit, one, or at least one for the. Good job, I'm nice. Go on, there, somebody.
So it would be, if you're entering the courtroom, you will be, it's not as you walk into our building every time.
Could be.
Could be.
Well. Here's how it sits, though. No firearms in the courthouse, if they want to go, they're going, that's the road. So. Metal detectors should go at the entrance, but that's going to put you in a bind, because then we have to man it, so. We're looking for direction a little bit on your end there too, what's your thought there?
I think the metal detectors come in handy, like when you get a big trial, when a heated trial, we've had trials in the past where we've had to literally wand everybody when they come in. Those wands don't work that good, to be honest with you, they're invasive on the people coming in, you're touching the people with the wand. Um, the metal detectors could serve up, you know, right now, just talking to Lieutenant Grohovak. The bid's closed tomorrow, and we have. We're the winning bidder on all four of them right now, at fifty dollars, fifty dollars, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars. So it's really one of those things where we could find the best use for it. You know, they come, they come in handy.
I know, I had talked with Joel at our first meeting meeting, you know, for sure, we want one at the front of, or at the front of the sheriff's department, which they've already got staff there to watch it. We put one at the door for the courtroom, whenever court's going to be in session, we're going to have a bailiff there anyhow, checking people, so they can monitor it. If we did install one at the front door, we can leave it turned off. And only turn it on if we get, we get a big trial or something serious going on.
Because they're going to hit on everything, they're going to hit on any watch, any kind of jewelry, or, you know, these detectors, so.
Well, and then it can be, I was reading through the literature, they can be adjusted so they don't pick up.
You know, what's.
The fifty-three.
What's more important, which we could find is a body, um, body scanner was Marquette County, a body scanner, I'll give an example, Marquette County, I know a tru that arrested a a lady. Took her into the jail there, and they got a body scanner up there, and she had um. Put enough stuff in her. CavITY that would have killed her within the night. And um that scanner picked up those drugs in the body cavity of the person coming into jail to save your life. And um. Though, to me, that's a better tool for us, is inmates come in, but them are a lot of money, I I like to find an airport or that.
We need to bid on those when they come up next.
Yes, I got Sam to help for those, we're ready for Sam at the keyboard, shut up. Whatever.
Does, you know, experience tells you when flights are down, is there like a a app out there that'll tell you when scanners are down? Best time to buy a scanner?
But these would be nice to have, I mean, right now, we got all four of them for two hundred and fifty bucks if the bid stayed.
I guess, just being here, it's like you've never had, it just feels like that's a big city thing, so. I know, I get like why we want them and all that.
County board meetings, say, where stuff comes up to account, where we could put some, put one right there when people come into the county board meetings.
Right.
You know, if we have a.
Really heat.
You might say. It could be used wherever we want to put them.
Okay.
And they're, they're a good tool to have.
The prosecutor's office did have somebody at one time that came in.
I'm in with a gun.
Yeah.
No, can't, it's got signs on the door, you can't do it.
Well, that's when, you know. You don't follow the rules, then the rules will make sure you follow them, that would be a scanner.
It's good business, we can put them use.
Okay.
In my opinion, it's a safety tool that.
I believe so too, especially at the sheriff's department, it'd be nice to bring.
Yep. And, you know, we're not allowed to body cavity search anybody anymore, so even if there's a weapon on that person, they come in. Ding ding ding, you know, it'll.
Let's strip it down to nothing, and still go on ding ding ding.
Then we gotta get a warrant to get a body cavity, you know, searched at that point, but um. It's a new world.
Good cha, good chance to upgrade our security with it, we need, so.
Absolutely.
Well, we have a chance to, and I appreciate it, I think it's.
In my opinion, it's it's probably a good idea, but. If they give them to you, and it costs you too much to run them, what good is it? You know what I'm saying, if you have to set up. Like I, I used to go into Newberry once a month. And uh they had. Uh sheriff's stuff sent there all day long, sent there.
Well. Can we afford that?
No, we can't afford that, but with with Newberry, with that, the scenario there, they don't have a jail, so basically, they're. It's probably one of the few deputy positions they they fund.
But it's going now.
To protect the courthouse kind of thing, but.
But even as Mike said, you don't have to have them all the time. They can be turned on when we have either certain meetings or certain court things are going on, so we don't have to have a bailiff or somebody there twenty-four seven.
But you can have it at the door here, we can. Perfect mount it. And to turn it on, off, and on, just.
Yeah. It isn't a trip, you know, it's one of those.
There's just the fact it's there.
Yeah, that it's there, it may deter activity from somebody coming in with a weapon, because they know Elder County's.
I mean, if Sam's at his office for the day, you know you're going to be in your office the whole day. We could turn it on. For that, because then you could just run there, because.
And you can adjust the sensitivity, so we were thinking in the courtroom. There's a bail of whether it's circuit court or district court, we can just turn it on, and as people come in, if it goes off, we can walk back and.
Yeah. Sorry, I made it go off.
Dean wants to put the one on the front door and turn on, just to watch it run to the front door every time it goes on.
Well, no.
It'll be him with the screwdrivers in his pocket, go back and forth.
Because, here's what it is, this argument came up already before. With the chief judge. That. It's the, not only just the courtroom, it's anything in this whole building. So now, are they switching gears, it ain't the whole building, it's just the courtroom?
No. This was. This is just me, I can. The back door of the courtroom, I'm standing in the front, so if it goes off, I can walk back there.
Right, but it, the thing is always.
You still can't have a gun in the courthouse?
Right.
So if you put it at the front door. That's the whole thing, who's going to man it?
Right, and that's what I said, who's going to man it?
Nobody. So. My thought is, if we put it at the front door, leave it turned off, you know.
Or turn it on once in a while.
Yeah, if we have a big court case going on, turn it on, we can screen people there and up there.
But you don't know if it's on or not.
Yeah.
You know.
You'd have to bottleneck it, with the one in Newberry, you could walk right by it, nobody's sitting there.
Well, we're literally on the front door.
No, it was in, it was in the hallway.
Yeah, we could mount this right in the front door.
Right on the inside of the door frame.
And that's what we were thinking in the back doors, so everybody goes in that door.
So you can't.
Can't go around it.
Right. Hold it right to the door.
Yeah.
And there might be stipulations that, it might not be too close to metal, you know, the door frame, so.
Sam's bid on one right now, the fourth one, and he's got a hundred bucks on, if it shows metal, it 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 actually tases the person, it shoots, taser into him, and it. Incapacitates him right at the door. That's smart.
But if you put it in the door, and you got a box for me to put my. Change or my, whatever metal I have, I got to walk back through that metal detector to get what I had, and then it's going to go on.
Yeah. You got to have a way to.
We have to have somebody there.
You have to, yeah, you would.
Yeah, and we, I know we discussed about that.
Yeah, and we, I know we discussed about that. You're probably not gonna run that one very often.
But if we have a big trial going on. Yeah, we could have somebody down.
You just can't use it for dysphernary.
We just had a, we just had a trial. And the judge, one of this, the one, one of the. And. You know, it's pretty hard to discriminate against only one and one person.
Especially with that person suspect.
This is gonna alleviate that, or you can.
Right, if everybody walks through it, it's everybody, even if you're just looking for one.
And faster than the one.
And stays paying for one of them. Yes, there's, they're gonna pay for the most expensive one. They agreed to pay up to, up to like two hundred.
Yeah, but in that bid may fluctuate tonight, Sam's gonna. Might fluctuate.
Tomorrow at like nine or ten, I think.
So, so we'll, we'll have to decide, we'll decide where our top bid is.
We got two to have when we need them. You know, that'll be a good tool to have when we need them.
And the gentleman that I talked to, the, there, they took them out, they went upgraded to a bigger one. Instead of having four of them, they just got one big one that they send everybody through. He said they're only two, three years old, he said they all function perfect.
So they went from four wings to one wing.
Yes, yes, that's the only reason.
The only really, even if we put three here, we still, there's still be one other.
One goes down.
Right, but you have to bottleneck it, you can't. You can't si- send somebody through it, like you said, put it in the door. Then all your walls and stuff is sitting out there, so you know what, you're gonna have to put it someplace where you can bottleneck it. And then have a, a hole where you can get your stuff out of the basket, or whatever you do. You just, uh, it, it, it's more to it, I think, than just five dollars for a, or fifty dollars. And I think we got a plan for that.
But with, with, with those mech, we would have the staffing for, if we had a se- high security trial. We'd have two deputies at the entrances and the exit anyhow. So they would be mad anyhow, they'd come through, you know, we would still have someone there in that high. Profile case.
And I know, but it, it isn't, a lot of times, it isn't just the profile to high profile trials. It's other things.
Sure.
Guy could be mad at his wife if he's working at the counter somewhere.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? It's, I think there's more to it than fifty dollars for a. In my opinion, I'm, I'm, I'm not talking for anybody else.
Well, no, and under those kinds of, yeah, and no, I understand what you're saying there.
If they can happen anytime.
Right. But we're not gonna man it twenty-four hour, we're not gonna man it every time, because we can't afford that.
But if you had a bottleneck, where you could have, where you put your stuff in a basket. And then you slide your basket through that little window, and then walk through, but that, that's the only way I see that working. Cause at, at, at any time, somebody can walk here with a gun, anytime.
They can walk through with a gun with them. You know, it ain't gonna stop them from walking through.
Oh no, but somebody will know.
Sure, sure.
And I, I talked to Joel about maybe if that happened, and you could slam that door locked. The door you come into, you know what I'm saying? But that, it isn't just on trials that you're gonna have that problem.
Yeah.
You're gonna have problems with. Other things. You're gonna have a spouse going into friends of the court that's just irate, it's a kid away from him or her.
I know the needs for our building is there, cause we, everybody, for our building, the needs are there, we gotta make sure no one's coming in with a weapon. Of our people we're arresting, booking, processing, um, the building over here, that's.
Now, they'll, they'll pay for one of these, plus any to set it up also, correct? I mean, just paying for the machine, one thing, but then to set it up and man it, that's all on their hours. Is that correct? Well, when you're up there.
So then, yes, in that case, yes. And they're not gonna pay another person for dollars, Sam, or whoever's gonna be in the bail with that bail.
But if they want this up there and ran, they're paying for it. So it's all reimbursed back to the home.
Yep.
Sounds good. The change. Good change, but it just feels weird.
So my guy's bidding on four.
Saying we need, yeah, we still need to.
Concert tickets in Wisconsin, he's bidding on two.
I got my concert ticket.
Doesn't seem like your kind of music, I don't know.
Uh, what were we discussing at the hundred, hundred?
We said twenty-two, one thousand, six hundred, and then put the hundred for that four.
I, the twenty-two, you can buy a brand new one for twenty-two, but that's what they're.
We might be able to buy all four of them for less than that, but we don't know.
We're definitely gonna get the one, twenty-two for the first, because nobody's gonna bid that high.
I'm pretty sure we're gonna get the one from sheriff, for the sheriff's department for thousands.
Right.
That's the limit on that one.
And then the other two, we're gonna do a hundred, or up to six hundred for capital improvements, third.
Hundred bucks on the fourth one, if we can get it. You got sensitive, anyhow.
Right, where are they at, um?
Madison.
Well, that's a good drive, so we gotta go down there and get them too.
Yeah.
M I D C, paying two hundred dollars, remember that?
Plus delivery.
Cost to get them here too.
So, twenty-two, a thousand, six hundred.
And a hundred.
And a hundred. And a hundred.
Think it's possible?
We're gonna get them for what we got for it all, but let's say they all go for three hundred.
And then, then we got three of them.
So the one for a hundred.
Well, the last one, how about this, up to seven hundred dollars for the two.
For the last two?
Right.
It's an auction, so we have to give them a limit.
A limit, yeah. M I D C's paying for one, they, they already.
Yeah, I, I understand.
Twenty-two.
Sheriff's Department.
Thousand dollars, the other two. We were like, one for us, we were talking six hundred, and then have a spare for hundreds. Why don't we give him the okay to go up to seven hundred for the two, so if you get the second to the last one for three hundred. You can still go up to another.
Right, we're, we're.
That's all right.
Up to two, up to seven for the two?
Yeah.
For number three and four.
Yeah. And don't make this public until.
What are my kids bringing in here?
That twenty-two hundred, did that call, uh, comes the installation with it? Or is that twenty-two hundred, and then we have to install? We shouldn't have to anything with that.
I guess I would look to Joel for that.
I'd have to check with Lily.
Whatever it takes. To get it.
Yeah, I would take that, at least that one, I would assume that.
Which is twenty-two, the high.
Yes.
But then, then you have to add.
If you're, if you're bidding two thousand, and it's gonna be installation.
Because it's right here, it's twenty-two hundred seventy, for a brand new one, two warranty, free delivery.
So, so I'm thinking you gotta put in, from the, from the gentleman that I talked to. They're pretty much plug and play, and adjust the sensitivity. He said the last time they upgraded and they sold theirs, he said we had a five hundred dollar limit on it. And he said we had a hard time getting people to.
Oh, I have a five hundred dollar minimum on them?
Yeah, nobody wanted it. He thought he put a five hundred dollar minimum on these, but he did, he called me back and he says, I guess I didn't put a minimum, so. Yeah. So through my conversations with him, I don't think they're gonna go for all that.
Odds are they're gonna pay a lot, the, the state's gonna pay a lot less than that for the machine.
This whole thing came about with the state.
Yeah.
We're jumping onto their shirt tails, the state says up point two hundred. I believe we should go down to say, how much is it gonna cost us to go get those, to get them, Madison? We gotta send a deputy down there, employee. One way.
Yeah.
That's a ten hour day, mass, haul trailer, gas. So you got ten, five hundred, you got, you got eight hundred dollars into that. I'd like, personally like to say fourteen hundred dollars max on the bid, and that gives that other eight hundred dollars to get it delivered here.
Oh, you mean the twenty-two hundred that they're allowing us?
I don't think.
It's not gonna go that high, I think you're smart by doing what you're doing. Yeah, I get that.
If we will fourteen max on it, cause we could just as easy, just order one right here, it's free delivery, it'll show up right in our driveway.
Right, the same amount you.
Right.
Yeah. And then the deputy's wages are covered too for going down there.
Right, that's what I'm looking at, it ain't costing the county anything that way.
My bidder will do his best.
What you mean?
He's pretty good at that.
Zero, zeros come.
Yeah, we have a consensus on fourteen hundred, a thousand, and seven hundred for the last two.
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Well, I'd like to have something added in there for installation.
He was just saying. They just plug in.
I don't, I don't wanna be spending a thousand dollars and it costs two thousand to hook them up. Oh no, they plug them all, well, slide them in there, and I don't know that. So, yeah, I'm, I'm with them. Number fifteen, it's got bidding up airport tractor and brush hog.
Wait, what?
We don't need them.
Oh.
And we, we'd have to fix the tractor again too. Cause we just had to powder wash all its hydraulics without the floor of the hanger.
It leaks like that. It's old.
Well, yeah, no, and.
Let's ready for some loving.
And rather than just continue to dump money into it, right now, we're, our volunteers are. Telling me that, that we're not going anywhere, so we'll be able to keep the grass up, and we'll have to figure out where to start. We need that, we need the hanger for planes and. Rescue team doesn't really wanna leak it all over their floor in there, so.
Who put the separate, it's been there?
Separately, we went back and forth on this.
We went back and forth a couple of times.
Be separate, Brian, you wanna do it separate, not just get rid of the whole thing? All right.
Maybe nobody wants a tractor and they just need a brush hog.
That's how it was put to me, however it works.
Okay.
You know.
They put the two of them together, it doesn't matter either way.
Me either, cause with the brush hog still sitting there this time next year, we go to the scrap lab.
Well, the thing is then, however, by just the brush hog, they gotta pick it up, have something to pick it up, to put it on a trailer to take it. But I guess that's a possibility, I just had to go pick up.
Yeah, so you, you picked up on what time you gotta have equipment.
Somebody's gonna bid on it together and then just get rid of the one, be like your scrap.
Okay.
So I don't think separately is a bad thing.
Okay.
Boom separately, if somebody wants to bid on both, they can always come to us and say.
They can bid on both. It's gonna, Joel, put a look on the website.
All right. Been the most separately.
Yes.
And that's the end of the week. You want us to hit the soap now, you wanna have vote on this right now, and?
No, you can have consensus to. All right, yeah, yeah, and then we can vote on, we can open the bid, put them on Monday too, whatever we get, sounds good.
But it's Monday or a week from.
Or next week.
Okay.
Yeah. The cutoff would be.
I'm a meeting behind all of a sudden.
And number sixteen, discuss advertising, question, proposal to reseal parking lot and repaint parking lot lines, um. I forgot to get a hold of Brian on that. There's, we have the new side, like the jail side, that's all real nice concrete, or asphalt still. And I don't know if we should pay to have that all resealed too with the whole bit, but I know our whole parking lot. It's cracked up pretty good, if we don't get something sealed it, every winter it's just gonna get worse and worse.
I started losing more chunks, more chunks.
Yeah, it's still fair out there, but it's.
I mean.
And we need new lines.
It definitely needs to be done, not just for that reason, but also because we have a lot of public that comes in parks here, whether it's school pickup. Or.
Yeah, the lines are pretty faded.
But that and. Safety for walking in and out, like we really need to make sure that people, and if it is one way in and one way out, like that needs to be. Put there, like if you come in that one way, and you're supposed to exit on the other side.
Supposed to be like that. Most people do, but you don't have to, like, no lines are there.
No, you don't have to.
I always come in here and go straight back up same way.
Yeah, but with that, with the school, that garage is right here, and people park in front of the garage, and then people come out and. Throw out here, throw out this way, when people are trying to come in that stop sign, I think that if there was the one way. Would kind of help slow traffic, especially cause a lot of people do.
If we do have one way, we could actually angle a little bit too, so it's easier to back out. If we had angled parking.
No, do not angle park.
It's a lot better than when you have straight parking like that, and you have.
I mean, I guess if it's one way and you can only come in.
Right.
That way.
I guess it'd be something to ask people who do lines, they, that's what they do for a living, and say, you know, you guys could get. It'd be easier access in here, cause if you're pulling in, and you go to park. It's easier to angle back out than have a, a ninety degree corner, like somebody's longer, see, I, I got longer vehicles. And when you come in and turn this way and park, and somebody else comes the other way.
Murray used to do that.
On purpose.
He used to paint our lines for us, so.
Yeah.
Could always contract with Murray.
Yeah. Well, we are talking angle lines, so.
Not weaving though.
I have just a thought.
Maybe we should talk about how we want the parking lot to be set up, and if, if it doesn't.
If you were, that's what I said, if you're. You're gonna have people that could answer that question right in front of the jail here for the next week.
It's not gonna change it.
You actually lose one.
That's okay, cause that would be my next suggestion, is if we make parking spots wider. Cause they are, I don't care what the standard is they come up with, I'd rather, I'd rather give up another spot and have.
You're not trying to turn so far.
And your doors are staggered then too.
Yeah, we're something to look at.
But yeah, I agree with you, I need to look at it.
I think, do we have a consensus to at least put it on, on bids, see what it's gonna cost?
Consensus here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Number seventeen, childcare fund costs allocation amendment.
We're gonna have a roadmap for your next time, for the next board meeting. We're just, we've put the cost allocation about thirteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-two or something like that. Into their probate childcare fund, and they didn't like that. So we're just gonna take the money out and put it in that cost allocation, so we'll amend their budget down. And put the money back in general fund.
Any questions, Donna?
No, I, I've asked my questions of Joel and Pam a couple of times.
Is that agreed upon?
So we increased their budget from last year's amounts, so at the beginning of the year, when we appropriated to the childcare fund, we did. Over and above the seventy-four thousand five hundred, sixteen thousand, or sorry, thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-two. So instead of. Instead of giving it to them to take back from that cost allocation, which we didn't put in the budget, there was. I'm, I'm not exactly sure why they didn't get budgeted in there, I think, because of the chart of accounts, and it wasn't there, we've never taken it before, so that line didn't exist. But in this, this scenario, we amend the budgets down. As if we didn't appropriate it in the first place.
Oh, okay.
Because it's a not allowable expense, then it shouldn't have been put there in the first place.
But we are giving them the total amount they requested.
Right.
That will stay in the budget.
And we need to put an extra thirteen thousand or more costs out to cover the cost. But apparently they can't pay cost allocation out of that, so we're just gonna take the extra money that.
Yeah.
Of the tonys that we put there.
Yes.
It wasn't state money, that was county money that we put to cover that, we'll just come back into the general fund.
Any questions? And the big one here, finally done the last of the three sheriff association, we have contract twenty-four to twenty-six.
No hits, no runs, no errors, as far as I can define again.
I think she's there this time.
Make those changes, Joel? It wasn't anything major, it's just cleaning up.
There was some index tweaks I did this morning, just cause the page numbers are off, uh, making some changes. Uh, the signer is John Walden instead of Emu. Um, yeah, I mean. The rest was, everything discussed in committees.
Everybody go down the union side?
As far as we can see.
Number nineteen, discuss how to field logging access, Mike?
Line Great Lakes guy called me. Thursday, Friday, it's already, I emailed everybody, uh, they're looking. So figuring probably the beginning of September, it looks like the market's gonna be where they needed to be to harvest that chunk they've got back there and off the corner. So they're looking for access down our access road, down our, down to the edge of our property line. The cross right where the forest service boundary is. The cross rate where the forest service boundary is at the north end of the, you know, they'll be involved. Rock a little over twelve hundred feet away from the end of the runway when they cross our property.
On the north end.
On the north end, the extreme north end on our property. Yep. Cause they've got a spot, they've got a chunk in that corner. Yeah, they actually touch us in one corner.
Like here's this big chunk of land you can have, but you can't get to it because everybody else will land around.
So they've, uh, apparently they agreed because they've already put the gate up for us. We asked on the access road, that I asked them to let me know ahead of time that. So I could run everything through everybody, but so apparently they agreed to the condition of putting the gate in place because.
Wanted a gate in there anyway, but.
Right, well, no, and they were gonna have to because we blocked that road off to control access, so I explained it to them and, you know. I told them, you know, you were supposed to tell me the next week and let me know what the answer was and I'm not. When you wanted to put the gate in.
Are we gonna get something in writing with them that, uh, they will, if they tear that up, it will be great?
That is part of the, part of their standard deal is. And that's, and I can ask them, I'll ask them for some of the writings.
Yeah.
They have to, uh, try to remember the exact word. Basically, anything they tear up on the roadway, they have to fix. We should end up with a better access road than we started with.
And should we also have them put tony for additional insured while they're doing work on our property?
They're just driving through it.
They're driving through it. I'll ask them, a lot of times though, they'll pull in there before they hit on a highway, I guarantee they're gonna go and make sure they're strapped good again. If something happens, if they got a brush, a cut, and something happens and they're.
And they did put the gate in far enough.
So.
So that the truck could pull, like a fully loaded truck could pull through.
Then they got.
Stop, shut the gate behind them and then still be on the access road and not, you know, so not sticking their nose out on the highway.
I think that's.
Came about ninety, ninety, hundred feet in.
Do they have a lot of material back there they're hauling out?
No, we said they've only got four or five acres that they're gonna do back there. So they they expect them, once they start, they expect to be done within thirty days.
Doesn't last long, four or five acres, I guess though.
Well, and he doesn't know right now.
Yeah.
What the exact start date is and. Yeah. So I've I've stressed to him that we have to know, and we have to know a start date ahead of time. Because we have to have our airport manager put a note of in to the FAA.
Yep.
That, you know, it's not gonna, and it's not gonna hinder any operations.
Not knowing there's a huge.
There may be a giant log truck and it wouldn't affect their landings or takeoffs, but they have to know that there's a chance that, hey, there's a log truck.
I would suggest that we go up there and put our lock on that gate. For now. So they do not start until they tell us, we go take that lock off once.
And I'm gonna call him again and that's, and yeah, I'll stress to him that, you know, we have to have.
That start date.
The start date, I'm very stressed, and I know our manager has as well, because he's talked to him too, we have to have a start date.
Why don't I see that lock, so they don't just say, hey, we started last week? No.
Yeah. I'm sure they won't have an issue with it.
No, we go put our lock on it, not them put their lock.
No, but.
Yeah.
I'd tell them first.
Right, yeah, it's locked until we get everything that's our date, so we can get that.
I'll go to that call more.
Any other questions? Consensus?
Yeah.
Yes. Number twenty, discuss moving November committee meetings to Monday, November fourth, starting at ten AM. That's just the one day, not all, just the one we have, what is it, uh, instead of community? Yeah, we have something going on.
Elections.
Elections, yeah.
I'm like, can we also change September thirths to a different day because it's the first day of school? I'm the only one here, you guys are gonna have to take my placement that one week.
And me and Mickey on that Monday, on that Monday, we gotta be in Newbury. So that's why everything started two hours later, so you guys can get back.
Okay.
Once we get back.
Get up early.
So I gotta wait until.
Best for the first one, so, so eight o'clock will be at ten o'clock, so.
Yeah.
So you have to hear till noon.
Till eleven. Oh, it ends at eleven and twelve.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, because you got the second one.
Consensus?
Yes.
Yeah.
Twenty-one. Okay, there's cost saving idea, right? Save money. All money.
What you got, Dean, what was this one?
Cost savings.
I got a revenue pass for.
Save your money or revenue sources?
I set a updated, um, contract to loose county today. I went over Commissioner Seberg. Um, I'm asking for three dollar per day per bed raise, which would raise our revenue about. Just under sixteen thousand dollars. Then my hope would be maybe in twen- twenty twenty-six, raise it a dollar, twenty twenty-seven, raise it another dollar. Every dollar is about five thousand bucks revenue, so. They've still gotta agree to it, you know, they, um. We'll see, but if if they agree to it, it'll be a, an increase to our general fund or to our room and board of about fifteen thousand. Where does that put us compared to pre-COVID, where you gave a discount? Um, still, well, it still keeps us behind about.
Okay.
Forty thousand dollars because pre-COVID, we're, they were paying us for eighteen inmates. Now we're getting paid for fourteen inmates. So we're still. Sure, still behind, but. In all fairness to loose county, I can't tell you less than that eighteen inmates in our jail. Oh, yeah, I'm, I get that, I mean, that's a, I just meant like the per bed. Yeah. Per night rate. Yeah, yeah. We started the contract at thirty dollars, Commissioner Seberg and I went over the rates today, we looked back to the history of it, what was it, thirty, thirty-two? Thirty-three, thirty-five, and now this is to be the biggest increase. And it went down.
You have to guarantee fourteen beds, right?
Yeah, 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 that's right.
And then anything over that, they pay extra also. If they say we, we guarantee them fourteen beds, they're filling eighteen beds right now, they're paying extra over that.
But they have the four.
Yeah, the four. That's just a minimum that they pay. Even if they have nobody in here, they're still paying for that fourteen bed. What do you, what do you figure costs run that for inmate?
I I know the revenue, loose county is about two hundred thousand dollars, is what they, with this increase, it'll be just under two hundred thousand. What will the county owe? Um, what the cost is, I. You know, we, the meal. Meal costs, it's a buck fifty a meal. That's what we pay the prison.
For health cares.
Health cares, they pay their healthcare, so. I I just paid over just under. Cause we're gonna have the same staffing regardless, we didn't increase staffing because of that. You know, I was gonna have two deputies run the jail on one, on nine one one, and that's. Pre loose county, that's what we had, and after loose county, that's what we have, so.
They pretty much paid that village, or paying for the village for the jail.
Yeah, it's it's. Yeah, and that was the goal all along.
The Newbury part of it is paying for the village?
Yeah.
Paying for the bond.
Paying for the bonds.
Not the middle, I'm sorry, yeah.
That was the goal all along and, before we figured it'd be paid off, Pam.
Well, we took it for thirty years.
We took it for thirty years, okay.
Might be a block ten, seven, ten.
We won't have to worry about it thirty years from now.
Yeah, I'm hoping.
But it's a nice little chunk of revenues, two hundred thousand dollars, I, you know, it's, uh. I'd hate to lose their contract because that's a lot of money to lose, so I I was real hesitant. Going three dollars, I was not gonna go to five dollars and increase, I just thought that was too much to ask a new sheriff and. They could beat all the three and come back to the table and negotiate with us again, but I'm hopeful they don't.
Don't know unless you ask.
Yeah, that's true.
Any unfinished business?
Well, I have a question on. Workforce solves. Hasn't been any progress on that?
I said he would have the prints to me, I think it was last week.
So.
But I will be talking to him tomorrow, I'll see where he was again. I told him we wanted him soon.
Yeah. They're desperate in grammar.
Yeah.
Definitely.
We need him before our next meeting.
Our next, our landing. We need to see him though, for the housings. So.
Putting forward the dance.
We, we need him forward, we need those bud.
Any else? Financial matters. You got any appropriations? Operate payment capacity for the community health. National health quarterly appropriation ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of eight thousand three hundred and five dollars. Consensus?
Any of the people.
Yes, consensus.
Yes.
Port bills, Joe? They all look good.
Signed off.
Me and you signed them, B. Really quick. Financial reports for all the funds.
Uh, this, all the reports are there, if they need, you know, a good three hundred page report, they can just let me know.
Financial reports, consensus?
Yeah.
The. Any transfers here?
I just put that on, we have that, do we have any?
Yeah.
We don't have any, go do it.
That child here, I I just left it there in case we had that child here.
So yeah, up in there, twenty-four, do we have any resolutions? Can you see there? No. Twenty-five, community reports.
Start a little line man. Uh, well, I, um. It it's kind of nice to, uh, do some testimonies of. And people, the, uh, at pathways, they had. The last meeting at the Soul Shore Place. And people who really benefit from that. Come in and they give their testimony about how each day it kind of saves them from falling through the cracks and. They actually, a good friend of mine, uh. I can't say where it's from, but he really has benefited from. Uh, pathways and has not had a drink in. Six to eight months, am I? And is doing just fantastic, so. I really appreciate that, and and those guys. Those guys that run that operation market, they're, they. They're pretty impeccable. They've been there a while, oh man, I can't remember the other guy's name, but. Yeah, it's it's really, uh. It's really nice to see those, uh, testimonies and see that that's working for. Where people can't, I mean, they just can't do it on their own and. But sometimes like the guy, you know, hasn't drank in eight months. He's. He's doing great. That's all I have to say.
Mike? Uh, the animal shelter update was that there was no update. Our lawyer, our lawyer, so. We don't have anything there yet, uh, the airport, touched on the logging, also expect. Hopefully by next meeting to have a proposal from some folks to expand our existing hanger, so we can have some more hanger space. All that's gonna work. We're working on. Uh, it'd be like a long-term lease deal. Where the, what they're looking to add is about a ten foot chunk on each to the left and the right, to the north and south. Using the existing rope line. And basically making those almost into like T-hangers to be able to open up. Uh, the metal framing for the existing hanger, there's ten feet between. The columns. Which is plenty of room to open up, so you can put the tail of the plane just into the old hanger and have the rest of the plane in the new portion, so. Working on, on with them. Hopefully I need some drawings, we're gonna sit down and work on. Yeah, I need to know how long a turn they need for that initial turn before it reverts to the county. Cause that's all that have to work, because we already own the existing hanger, so anything added to it would have to come back to the county. For some time, so that we have full ownership of it. They, they're gonna be able to make it work, so. Soon as I get some details and some information and some drawings, so that we can all know what we're looking at and seeing and go over, I will get it to you.
So you're gonna add on the north and the south?
Is what they would like to do, yeah. Um, it's forty feet east to west, so basically they're looking at like a ten by forty chunk on each side.
Just to get the plane.
Just to get, so that way they could get up to four planes in there then, instead of two.
Good idea.
So. They're, they're trying hard to come up with a way to make it work for everybody, so that they can get some space soon, instead of. Cause everything else is probably gonna take a lot longer. The zone, hell, zoning wouldn't be an issue, and we'd still go to the township, but since we already have an existing building there. We're adding on, so we're not building new, we're not putting in septic or anything like that, so. I will, once they give me some details and I, I shoot it full holes and they fix the holes, then I'll bring the rest of it, so that we can do it again.
Yeah, that building there was in pretty good shape.
Yeah, it's, it does have some issues.
Yeah.
Uh, it's got a couple of leaks. And there's a leak up on the one corner.
Coming down.
Yeah, yeah, it's getting some of the insulation, the garage door steel is garbage. At some point, they spray foamed it. Right, like to the floor.
Yeah.
Between the floor and the door. So we had looked at that, you know, that might be just as simple as, you know. Even Menards, might have to buy three of garage door seals to string together enough. You know, we'll work on that too, and get that as part of that. So, yeah, they're looking, they're working hard to find a way to make it work for them and for the county, so. Cause we do have another airplane base there now too, so we are now up to three. That are permanent residents, so.
Um, yeah, um, anything I have to do on this company department, I don't think, nothing, no news there really, except for the. Um, not an island outspread. My dad.
I, uh, I got two fairs. Um, the one in Escanaba is doing fantastic. I don't really, I, they didn't give me the schedule, but I've got a, a schedule, I showed them. Uh, Kelly here, of the events, there's, there's like almost sixty to eighty events there every year. That is very busy.
Throughout the whole year.
Yeah, and it, and it's good for the area, you know, and, uh. The channel fair was about averages, look maybe a little bit better than average. And I got hooked for a two hundred and twenty-five dollar chicken, so. That's all I've got.
Kelly?
Been out of there for two weeks, missed a few. You guys catch me up.
Correspondence? Or comments, Kelly, you're starting your end.
Nothing, Mickey? Well, I was. The last meeting we had when, uh, the person was in here complaining with the, that our county is. Uh, spending too much time that, uh, enforcing the laws of our county. And he wanted to see the sheriff or the. State police out of here, and I was sure glad, uh, Officer Blank was here. And kind of set the guy straight. I think, uh, we had and have a mess in this county with drugs. And I think we're picking away at it, and I, I really think that, uh, we need to do that. We can't be just letting things up like, like he wanted, you know, just stop spending money on that because our. Prosecutor was willing to prosecute people, and I'm, I'm for the prosecution. And he was totally wrong. And I was glad. Officer Blank put him in his place. That's all I got.
Don't have anything, except. Do we know, do we have our property, the north side of the health department that we still own, is that a survey?
I'm just gonna wind me something. I don't write it down, I'll forget it in the next twelve seconds. I wrote it down, when you said survey, um. Gentleman from the Forest Service had contacted me. Um, last week I was, a week and a half ago, I was out camping, miracle, I got the phone call, I mean, first business, but, um. They were just gonna be cutting through some of the corners, uh, they're gonna have some logging going on sometime here in the future on their property. Uh, our airport property is now all surveyed. Thanks to the federal government, because. The line is, you have to stay, the markers are here, they're on this side, we're on this side, so we've basically gotten our property surveyed for free.
There was a cost savings.
It was, it was surveyed when we got from the Forest Service.
Right, but it's actually marked now.
They, they marked it.
Yeah, so now it's marked, they've got the signs out, they've got, uh, guidepost trees, are all marked. Even down on the south end there, I went down there and took, checked too, we have that corner's marked, so. So, so that's a benefit to us to know, sure. You can, you can see from one sign, what's the next, so.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah, I was, I don't have any question now about where, where our line is.
Rich? Nothing? Staff comments, Joel?
We made it to another election.
You sound thrilled, when, when does that start again?
Ninety now.
The prepping for it.
Yeah, I mean, a few. Few, uh, pickups, but, you know, nothing. The results were all good. Yeah, worked out.
Did you have quite a few people come to early voting, or was it?
Early voting, we had ninety-two.
Wow.
Probably ten today. Yeah, we seventy-five in federal, so more.
Ma'am?
Nothing for me.
Sheriff?
Yeah, we, uh, Tina approached me today, we, we're gonna be presenting life savings awards to the Burke Township ambulance corps. Tina, real quick, could you explain what happened?
We had a call last week, uh, Burke Township actually was just returning from a call. Uh, they have a nine-one-one, a gentleman was breathing up unresponsive. They got him into the ambulance, started heading over this way, and the gentleman actually coded, full coded in the ambulance. Uh, for about five minutes, and the crew got him back, he started talking, which is pretty cool. Uh, they got him to Marquette General, and I got a call today from Bob. Unfortunately, I don't always hear about the outcomes of our folks, our patients. But Bob did talk to the, to the wife, or somebody did today, and the gentleman was treated, and he's getting released, I think, leaving today or early in this, this week, so. Um, so, without, without them, and that's, that's where we're also pushing this class coming up, trying to get people, because that gentleman would have never made it. If he had to wait for someone over here to get there. So kudos to having Chuck and Bob, um, cover as an ALS when they can, because that's really what saves. Unfortunately, a lot of it is the drugs and, and everything else, so, yeah, we're pretty excited.
And Burke's part of Eldrick County EMS, so that's, uh, you have a great EMS service. For the commissioners that have supported the village and supported the department in the EMS, you have a top-notch EMS department. And, um, a lot of credit goes that girl right there, um, but, but the people on the scene, where the rubber meets the road, they're getting it done. And they're saving lives, so. Proud sheriff again with, uh, another life savings, with Burke Township now.
They had a chance, because they were just getting back off the run, they did the thing, they worked back in town and then.
And we get a article for some kind of press.
We will, yeah, yeah, we will.
And I, that's, and the sheriff's gonna, um, we're gonna present them with those savings, we were.
We'll go over to township board meeting.
Township. I do know that the medic that was on there is getting ready to go on vacation for about six weeks, so I'm not sure, I have to get with him. So.
Let, let us know when, when you schedule it.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Sam, anything? Nothing. Uh, brief public comment. Once, one, twice, two times though? Adhere.